So Chris, would you like to?
Sure, well, uh, call this meeting order.
All right.
I have seven oh six.
All right.
See the roll call.
Okay. Hill.
Here. Remotely in Dexter.
Becker.
Here remotely in Dexter.
Griffin.
Here remotely in the city of Dexter.
And Wallaker.
President from the city of Dexter.
Thank you.
All right, move on to the approval of the minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes as presented, although I do have one edit. I'll wait for a second.
I'll second.
The only thing I wondered about is on page two, and this may be something that can't be changed. In the paragraph right at the bottom, just before the number one and the number two, where it says, based on the information provided by the applicant and staff. The board determines that the variance is requested, et cetera, et cetera, meets the criteria. So technically here it's talking about variance is plural and saying that they meet, which so there is not subject verb agreement there. I don't know if you're able to change it to meet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
That's the only thing I noted.
All right, any other discussion?
Oh, it looked okay to me.
Yeah, it looked okay to me.
All right, well, call vote then. Hill.
Um. Good, yay.
Okay.
Excellent. Best I've ever seen.
Becker.
Hi.
Wallaker.
Hi.
Griffin.
Hi.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, onto the approval of the agenda.
I'm over to prove the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Wallaker.
Hi.
Hill.
Hi.
Becker.
Hi.
Griffin.
Hi.
Thank you. Next is the staff reports. I don't have any verbal updates besides, I don't think I announced at the last meeting that Justin Breyer was appointed the city manager. So now instead of, he's been the city for a long time and was serving as interim city manager for a while and now it's accepted the position. But besides that, I have no additional updates to Michelle's report. Did anyone have any questions on on that?
Could I just add that we have had city councils had their organizational matters meeting. That's something that happens after new council members join or after an election. So as part of that, we determine which council members will be, you know, ex officios to the various boards and commissions. And so with the recent addition of Sanam Arab, it was decided or I agreed to step off of ZBA so that she could step onto a board or commission that meets a little bit more regularly than some of the other ones. So we have not officially approved those updates because that was just a work session. So my guess is we'll do that at our next meeting, which is next Monday. So this will probably be my last ZBA meeting, which it was short and sweet. I only came on in November, but I learned a lot in just that short time. So thanks for your good work.
All right. Well, thank you. Thanks for serving. And yeah, you did get a bit of action these few months. So.
Yeah, I think at least two, two cases.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. All right. Well, thanks for the update. And so the only, the other item that I had put in the packet since it came up at the last meeting was an overview of the ordinance requirements for expanding nonconforming structures. Since there are alternate criteria besides a variance that the ZBA would need to consider in some cases. They're mostly for single family dwellings. Legal of nonconforming, single family dwellings can expand just with staff approval, as long as that expansion is within the permissible building envelope. For any other use, expansions of an existing legal nonconformity outside of the building envelope will require ZBA approval according to that 2405 F criteria. And while there's 10 items listed, it is a lower bar, I think, than that of a variant. So it can be a a good option to give, allow people to do expansions and without being overly burdensome while allowing the city to maintain some discretion. And then in cases where there's a nonconforming structure that will increase a nonconformity or create a new one, then those cases may even require both the variance and that 2405 F approval. So I included a diagram of how those requirements are applied in the memo. And I believe there are some current diagrams in the zoning ordinance. We may update them as a part of the ongoing zoning ordinance update. But does anyone have any questions about those requirements?
The only question I have, is this something that's unique to Dexter? Or is this something that most cities and municipalities have?
Um, not all cities, local governments do, but my understanding is that it's not uncommon.
Okay.
Yep.
Filing away that in my memory bank for future representation of people.
Okay, okay.
That's what I'm asking, yeah.
Okay, yeah, it's um. Ann Arbor does it, I know. My impression is like that it's not uncommon, but it's, it's, it's not like, it's not specifically listed in the zoning enabling act. But it's an exercise of that additional duties as a, as a assigned discretion that municipalities are granted.
Okay.
All right. So unless anyone has any more questions, I guess we can move on.
I'm good.
I have no more questions.
All right. So moving down then to other business, councils requested board and commission feedback on a draft conflict of interest ordinance. This is being written, I think, to fulfill a city charter requirement that the city adopted conflict of interest ordinance. It's been sometime incoming. I think it was kicked in the background a little bit. The council's been proceeding with that recently. This draft would also establish a a board of ethics for the city as well. And so any if there's anything, any of you, any comments that you'd like to share with council or questions, I can take those down and pass it along. And Jamie, since you've have been involved with this, there's anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, yeah, thanks. I think there are a couple of key points that I'd be interested in hearing feedback from you guys or other people you know now or sometime in the future. So we kind of went back and forth on two different versions of drafts for a while. And the way it's worded in the charter right now is it says the use of office, the use of public office for private gain or the appearance of private gain shall be prohibited. And then it says that that will be enforced via ordinance. And we haven't had an ordinance on the book since becoming a city. So council started discussing this back in 2019. And there's no definition of private gain in the charter. So that remains to be sort of determined by council. One ordinance limits private gain to financial gain only. And specifically, financial gain to the public official and or the public official's immediate family. This ordinance is broader than that as described in the definitions. So it's more than just financial gain and it involves relationships more than just the immediate family. So I guess I'm most interested in figuring out support for or against either direction of a narrower scope, just financial gain, just immediate family members. Or something broader, either broader because it's more than financial gain or broader because more than the network of relationships. And then also how people feel about a board of ethics who sort of serves not necessarily in a final deterministic role. But as the first group of people who would review any concerns about violations of the ordinance. And then they would ultimately make a recommendation to council to determine what the, what the outcome would be. So that's sort of generally what I'm, I'm most interested in feedback on. But of course, you could provide feedback on any other part of it. Some people are concerned that maybe there's too much in here. It's, you know, they don't want it to be an ethics ordinance. They want it just to be the financial conflict of interest ordinance. You know, so people can have different preferences there. What else is I thinking of? Uh, I think that's it for now. So I don't know if you have additional questions about that. Oh, if, if there are specific, I think what would be most helpful too, to me, because some people have concerns that somebody who's an active community member might be discouraged from joining a border commission because they're suddenly going to feel like their relationship in the community is now like by definition going to be perceived to be a conflict or is going to be an actual conflict. Or vice versa, somebody who is a public official might be discouraged from becoming an active member in their community, but you know, by joining various other non-governmental groups. And I appreciate that concern. And so what I'm looking for too, with people who have that concern is, is there a specific clause in this ordinance that you think would prohibit those relationships across, you know, local government to city organizations and city involvement? Because I don't think that would be the goal. I don't think we would want it to be the case where people feel like they can't be involved. At the same time, we do want to minimize perceptions of conflicts and and actual conflict. So I'll leave it at that for now.
Well, I think that, yeah, you want to be careful of that because if you're saying you're, if you do write it so that it excludes people like that, then you're basically saying, we don't want anyone in on the city council who cares. I mean, the people who care are involved in these things. You know, they join community organizations. I certainly wouldn't run for city council is my first stroke at getting involved in the town. I, you know, you join the rotary or something like that. You know?
Yeah, this ordinance, I, it's pulled almost verbatim from the city of Rochester in Michigan, which has about 13,000 residents. And they said they have not had any cases before their board of ethics in that whole time. I think there, there is a part, the only part in there that I think mentions involvement in those other organizations specifically calls out direct involvement and direct involvement, they define to be like part of having a decision-making authority or critical decision-making authority. So they specifically differentiate between somebody who's in a decision, like a key decision-making role in an organization versus somebody who is volunteering for something or who shows up as an, you know, shows up at an event to volunteer to help out with something. So again, I think those are valid concerns and I, I think we would want to be careful about having an ordinance that you know, either actually prohibits that or appears prohibit that. I think the best feedback for me or the rest of council would be to see the exact part of the ordinance that we would need to address or modify or that somebody thinks speaks to that.
Cause.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Jeff.
Um. This, what we're talking about here wasn't part, wasn't included in the packet this time, was it the wording for this? In other words, I'm going to have to find it online.
It's in the end of the packet.
Oh, is it?
And, yeah, yep.
Didn't see it. A couple of thoughts. First of all, the, the broader definition to me is of conflict of interest is to me, it's got to be that or ought to be that rather than the simply the financial gain for family members. In other words, you can easily see where friends could benefit if someone was not ethical in making decisions based on friendships. So I think I personally highly recommend that that broader definition be included. When you're talking about folks who are involved with some of the, you know, Kiwanis or Rotary or whatever, I think exactly what you were just mentioned. Jamie is the way I would look at that, but I don't know that, since I didn't look at it and I apologize for that. But I don't know how that wording is, I think, simply being a member of an organization shouldn't preclude you from participating in that manner. And but I do see that developers, for instance, you'd have to be careful in that regard because you can see how decisions made at council could dramatically affect how they approach what they do, how that's handled, I don't know. Maybe even, well, that's the first thing that comes to mind is developers, but as I say, I have not read it and I should.
There is time. I think we're only uh, I don't know if at this next meeting, we're planning on setting the public hearing for the first meeting in September, which would be September 13th. But just because we have a public hearing at that time, doesn't mean we're going to adopt it at that same meeting. So I think there are a lot of members on the council who are waiting to hear public comment. So there would be time to submit feedback. However, you feel comfortable submitting feedback once you have a chance to take a look.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm personally interested in 6K, which is the subsequent conflict of interest prohibition. For example, like if my firm were to represent a developer, obviously I would recuse myself if it were in front of the ZBA. But if they have to go to planning commission and city council, would I be subsequently be prohibited from doing work for, for that client? I don't, I don't know based on the wording here. I don't think so because I would recuse myself. But that could be an issue for me personally.
Two years. Yeah. So yeah, I did not draft this. So I think that's a, a good question. And so I think it's not clear where it says within two years of the participation. So it seems to me, are they two years prior or in the future?
Yeah, I miss, I, I'm, it's, it's subsequent. So I'm assuming like the, the first word in essence, the subsequent. So I'm assuming that would prohibit me from doing work on that project to, for two years.
Two years after having done.
Yeah. I mean, but.
Right.
But I would recuse myself from it. So I think ultimately this wouldn't be applicable to me. Because I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have participated in the approval or disapproval or whatever.
Right.
It's just something that I'd like to note out there. I think that that, that could cause some burdens on some people.
Right. And is it even saying where say you weren't on the board? Yeah, I guess is it saying implying that you would have had to have been on the border commission the two years prior and, you know, up through the two years? And it would prohibit you?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that's what it's trying to do, right? It's saying that if, if I participate in, in the approval of a project that two years later, I can't then go work for the, the developer on that specific project.
I could see that being tough to anticipate though.
Right.
In the future. I know the only other time I think we've considered and this is not, I don't even know if this is vaguely similar, but when we were talking about the what's it called hardship exemption for property taxes? There was something that comes written. I don't know if it's from the state, how if in the past year, there's some like past timeframe where if you've basically sold some of your assets for less than they were worth, you're disqualified from applying for the exemption. Because maybe you, you did.
You're liquidating your assets. Yeah.
Right, 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 right. And so I know we, we tweak that timeframe because I think there's the real like, how could somebody have known X amount of time before that then this real hardship thing was going to happen. And it's not like they did this intentionally. So I think it's a point worth considering. I, we can look around and see if other ordinance, other ordinances have a similar provision either at all or with a different timeframe.
I mean, I get what it's going for, right? It's trying to say, you know, I approve a project and then two years later, I'm working for the developer and getting paid twice as much as the next guy. I, I totally understand the rationale behind it, but it's just hard to say that you're prohibited from two years from doing work for
Yeah.
anything on that given project, you know?
Do you think a different timeframe would be more appropriate or like zero?
I mean, two years seems okay to me. I mean, it doesn't seem excessive in any way. It's just hard to anticipate, right? So, you know, ultimately that would, yeah. It could prohibit me from, from working for someone who I had no idea who I was going to work for at the time, right?
Right, right.
Yeah.
You could end up like those poor Jimmy John's sandwich artists.
Right, yeah, with the non-compete clauses. Right.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we could, minimally, we could consider changing the timeframe if a year seems more reasonable or six months or eight months. I don't know how long it takes for these deals to.
Or could you have some kind of a process?
Yeah, there, I mean, they could maybe have some sort of end around where you could ask, you know, the board for permission to to allow you to work for them or something like that. I mean, that, that's a possibility as well. Right? Some sort of waiver system. But that was the only, that was the only thing I noted in there. I think overall it looked okay.
And one other issue that came to mind or I guess consideration is I'm just wondering if people think having a conflict of interest implies having a nefarious intent, or do you think somebody could have a conflict of interest without one?
For me, absolutely. You could have a conflict of interest without if you put it nefarious.
Yeah. With the best will in the world, you could still get into trouble.
Okay, that, I mean, that's, that's the way I see it too, that, that I think if somebody has a conflict, it doesn't mean that they're trying to do something deceptive or malicious or wrong. It just is, it's, it's a function of the relationship that they have. Whatever, you know, the context of that relationship is that potentially impedes their ability to be unbiased in decision-making situation or gives the appearance of being unbiased in decision-making situation. So I was just curious what you thought about that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, from my perspective, it's pretty similar to a judge, right? I mean, I, you know, your, your best friend comes before you. Yeah, he's not, not a family member, but you're likely to go pretty easy on him. There's an issue.
Or alternatively, in some cases, people can go harder on that just because they're so concerned. You know, they don't want to have a conflict. They're harder on their family or whatever. We've all been there too. So.
Well, for sure. Any other thoughts you have or generally, or if you can map it specifically back onto this draft wording, it would be really helpful as we consider how to move forward.
Feel free to email any updates if any of you have ideas after the meeting. There are only two minor things I would bring up that related to the ZBA's purview of work. The ZBA, so this ordinance would supersede the ZBA's bylaws. The ZBA's bylaws do have a clause that say living or owning property within the notice area of a site subject to a case is not necessarily a conflict of interest. ZBA added that during the last bylaw update. And that, that seems to be consistent with this ordinance. There is one line in section 6J. It kind of exempts ownership of property as necessarily a conflict of interest. So I think, I think defining that living within the notice area of a ZBA case as not necessarily being in conflict is at least important to have that definition one way or the other. So again, when with this draft, it wouldn't require any changes out of the ZBA's bylaws or this draft, but just something I wanted to point out. The other consideration that's yet to be determined is that when there's a question of a conflict, the ZBA's bylaws allow a member to disclose that to the board as they would have to under this as well. But it also gives the ZBA option of voting. If there's a question of a conflict that isn't a clear conflict of interest, the ZBA can vote yes or no. I guess the question will be whether or not that, that's something the ZBA could still do in the event this was adopted and that a board of ethics was established.
What does that say, Mike? In other words, if a member suggests that they have a conflict of interest based on proximity of where they live to the subject property, for instance, which is the case now that, that the board can vote to say to allow that member to participate anyway, is that what?
I think that's, that's the idea is at, is at least to try and make the situation or at least include the situation in the record documented and then have a the, have a a consensus decision about whether or not a conflict exists. At least in, in cases where it's not something that's overtly a conflict. So let's see. Well, I can, I can best summarize it as maybe covering your butt, so to speak, in cases where like, again, there's no overt conflict, but if it's a bit of a gray area, it allows for some kind of determination process for at least like that board commission to review the case and vote one way or the other.
And it gets it on the record, so it's not a secret.
I've wondered myself about the 300 foot thing. For instance, I had to recuse myself on one of the, one of the cases here because we live within 300 feet of, or whatever it is. I think it's 300 feet. And, you know, I don't know the people, didn't know the people. I can see their house across the street, but that's it. So the 300 foot all by itself seems a little arbitrary, but to an ex, you know, because you, if you didn't, if I did know them, yeah, okay, I understand. I'm going to recuse myself. But and, and I can see perhaps other things that would weigh into that. So that was, that's always been a little curious to me, but there's also the if someone can recuses themselves, I don't see the point in the rest of the board being allowed to say, well, you, we think you ought to be involved for whatever reason. You either recuse yourself and, and don't participate. But the, to have the ability to to participate based on what everybody else thinks about you or what, you know, your opinion on it, that makes sense to me.
Okay, well, um. Some of those points. A member can always recuse themselves regardless of what the subsequent vote is. That was something that when we were drafting the update, members wanted included. So the, the, the vote doesn't essentially, wouldn't essentially force a member to participate if the board determined particular circumstance wasn't a conflict. The notice radius, I would have to double check. I think the 300 feet may come from state law. And it is an MML recommendation that that small, especially smaller communities include a provision saying one way or the other, living within the notice area is or is not a conflict. To just to both define it and that it can be. To just to both define it and that it can be adequate protection to say that, you know, living within that radius is not a conflict. Especially in a smaller community where. Uh, it could be that nearly every case, and it does happen frequently here, that a member lives within the notice area. So. And then lastly, I guess, I, and it would be in those unusual circumstances where it's kind of a gray area. Whether or not a conflict exists. So hopefully that answers some of your questions.
I mean, it's a really small town and we're a really small board.
Right, right.
Lose too many people before it starts becoming kind of tenuous.
Exactly, yeah, I know we've had a case where two members lived within the notice area. Maybe more than one case, so.
And you need three?
Yes.
There, I wondered if there was something in here that talked about when a quorum. Was no longer. Possible. I'd have to look back at that.
I I would too, and I know for the ZBA. Uh, decisions need to be by majority of members. So essentially, the ZBA can't take action if members aren't present. And any vote in the affirmative would require. All yeses from those three members. If only three were in attendance.
Oh, by the way, that that would be the case where, yes, having a, having the ability to. Allow someone to participate, even though they're within that three hundred foot radius would make sense. To so chat a quorum.
Right. And I think Chad, in in your case, I remember. It was, I I think. Since living adjacent to the property. Was the question and the way the or the city zoning ordinance defines adjacent, it includes properties that are potentially across the street. So again, that that could be, that could be a circumstance where maybe that would be something the board could put to a vote. Since I think even it was. Still open to a little interpretation.
It's all helpful feedback to me personally, so thanks.
Alright. Well, thanks, everybody. The last item is a election of officers. Uh, so the way, uh, so the planning commission does this, anyone can express their interest in serving, the two positions are the chair and vice chair. And you can nominate someone who's not here, that being a regular member. And then it's just a vote to affirm.
Well, myself. Um, I. I would nominate. Chris, because he tends to be here very regularly. Uh, as chair and maybe Phil is the vice chair since. His history has been missing, you know, he he's missed a fair number of meetings lately.
And so Phil had told me that he'd be interested in continuing to serve in whatever capacity, but if anyone else. Wants to do it there, he he's fine with that too, so.
And the nomination.
Sorry?
Have an overwhelming desire either way.
I I said I would second.
You've done a good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, been great.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Alright, so I. Guess that sounds like a. Motion.
Do you want to make it official, Chat?
How do I make it official, I I I nominate?
I moved to.
Okay, I move to nominate Chris Wallaker as the chairperson for the zoning board of appeals. And Phil Mikos as. Uh, vice chair. Of the zoning board of appeals.
Second.
Alright. Shall I call the vote? There's no further discussion. Griffin?
I.
Becker?
I.
Bill?
I.
Wallaker?
I.
Alright. Officers have been elected. Alright, well, thanks, everybody, I think that is the last item. On the agenda, so.
I'll move to adjourn. At seven. I guess you need a time.
Alright. I am all in favor.
Hi.
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 It was nice getting to know you guys.
You as well.
Yeah, thanks again, Jamie.
Yeah, sure thing.
Good night, everyone.
Night.
Goodnight.
Yeah, hold on, do one second, oh, one question, next, the September, we're gonna meeting, we're gonna be meeting, right? I mean, our next meeting is September, right, so it's gonna be person face-to-face, okay?
Uh, yes, there, um, the deadline, the application deadline is the end of this week, uh, we had. I haven't heard of anyone planning to submit yet, so it's likely the meeting will be canceled, and I'm not sure when in September we'll begin. Begin person meetings again, I'm not sure if that's been announced yet.
Okay. Alright. Thanks.
Alright.
You all.
How's it going, everyone?
Alright, goodnight.
Goodnight.
Bye.